I had to leave my job.
I know.
On my lunch break, so maybe this will work. Some of this half a...
Oh, we're waiting for a quorum, but here we go. Good, are we streaming live and all that?
We are streaming.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Don't you ever have coffee thrown?
All right, good morning, the time is now 8:02. I'd like to call to order this emergency meeting of the Grand County Council on Friday, September 20th, 2019.
We need a quorum.
We need a quorum.
Here in the quorum. Let's get on up there.
You look like you came straight from the parade.
Yeah. I'm going to a parade, assembly and all that.
Nice.
Hey, good sleep.
Oh yeah, sorry, sorry. Uh, those present, well, let's just go around and introduce ourselves.
Curtis Wells, Grand County Council, at large.
Mary McGann, Grand County Council at large.
Evan Clapper, Chair of the County Council.
Jaylen Hogs, County Council.
Rory Paxman, Grand County Council.
Lisa Shumway, Board Chairman Representative on the Travel Council. You are Executive Director of the Travel Council.
Howard Trent, Hallier Travel Council.
Sharon Kinsey, Travel Council.
Sherri Major, Travel Council.
Terry Morris, Grand County Council.
Thanks for that. We do have another general business action item before we get into the meat of our other discussion. This is Item A, Approving Extension of Job Posting Notice for the Justice Court Judge Position that Closes September 3rd, 2019, Following an Extension from August 12th, 2019. Mary?
To make the motion to approve the extension of the job posting notice for the Justice Court Judge Position that Closes September 3rd, 2019, Following an Extension from August 12th, 2019.
Sir?
Motion made by Mary McGann, seconded by Curtis Wells. Discussion?
Question, Mr. Chair.
Please.
How long is an extension?
Oh.
Oh.
Uh, are we talking one week?
One week.
Do we know if the selection board has been filled?
It has not been filled. The President of the Bar Association is trying to seek a bar appointment. We have five applicants. There were no other late applicants, although it was thought that there were, so what was stated was correct at the time, but it turned out this would be the only late applicant that we know of, the one that was discussed at Tuesday's meeting. But opening it up, there could be some others, and those would not be considered late if this passes, obviously. The deadline for the newspaper, which would be handled through the Administrative Office of the Courts, which is, I believe, Monday at noon, for next Thursday's paper.
So next Thursday, so we should probably just follow the Monday, correct?
Well, I mean, I definitely think there's a benefit to the community to have as many applicants as possible, so I don't know if extending the deadline would shake some more folks out of the trees, or if it's...
I would restate my motions.
A week? Do we need to restate?
That's only one day after the paper comes out.
I think the motion could be amended if that's what...
I'll amend the motion to extend it for two weeks.
If we extend it for one week today, then it gets put in the paper system.
I move to approve the extension of the job posting notice for the Justice Court Judge Position that Closes September 3rd, 2019, Following an Extension from August 12th, 2019, Extending the Job Posting Applications until March 3rd, 2019. On October 30th, excuse me. On October 30th, 2019. An authorized chair sign all associated on.
So amended motion by Mary McGann?
Sir?
Seconded by Curtis Wells. Any discussion? All those in favor? I, motion passes six to nothing. All right, have we made it to 8:05? We did, it's 8:05. I'd like to call to order the joint Grand County Council member with the Travel Council Advisory Board with those same present. Discussion Item A, Review and Joint Discussion of Representative Albrecht's Proposal for Transient Room Tax Reform. Kurt, you want to start us off?
You bet. So TRT reform has been something that's been discussed for years and years, and, you know, in the past at least two years, discussions on what those changes will look like or would look like have been pretty active. And so what we received early this week, last week, was just kind of a preliminary outline from the Utah Association of Counties and Representative Carl Albrecht on what they would propose for amendments to the TRT law. There are numerous rural counties involved in UACT that have been actively discussing and advocating for amendments to the law. Now that we have something on paper to look at, and in discussions with Elaine, we saw that we get together and discuss it and see what the Travel Council Advisory Board thinks, and also give the Grand County Council an opportunity to discuss it. We have two additional items in addition to the document that was included, that's, yes, that document, and I don't know if I'm seeing it, but our Clerk Auditor Chris Barrett has provided a chart that shows projected impacts of changes to that law.
We'll get copies.
Okay.
Thanks.
Which is really helpful, and then also a draft statement of position from the Grand County Council, which is not to be voted on today, it's for discussion purposes, so that the County Council and the Tourism Advisory Board can, you know, discuss what our formal position will be. We need to have something on the books as a council, you know, moving forward if there's going to be, you know, support or opposition for the amendments to the law. So I get where I will leave off is, as long as I've been involved in the discussion, it's been, the arguments for have been to free up more money for essential services and infrastructure to see that tourism is paying more for these needs that we're currently kind of taxing the general fund, maybe taxing's not the good word, but providing some pressure for the general fund. And the arguments against have been if we give up any promotional money and scale back from the 47%, that we'll never get that money back for promotion, and that the concern is, is that, you know, as the need for promotional dollars in the future comes up, that money won't be available. And so I will be the first to say that I think what's been proposed is about as down the middle as you're going to find on something like this. As far as what they're proposed is, is that to establish a floor of what the 2018 promotional funding levels are for the counties affected by the bill, and any growth on top of that dollar amount moving forward would shift to the mitigation side, and the percentage is from 47% down to 32% moving forward. Chris's projections have the impacts of that based off of, I think, 7%. Not, Grand County not seeing any additional revenue for mitigation until 2024. Did I state that correct, Chris?
Not quite, so the legislation that's proposed right now proposes to lock in the travel councils, or the promotional side of the revenue at the 2018 level, which is a little more than two and a half million. And also institute a 32% split between promotion and mitigation, whichever is going to be the greater of the two. And so if we lock the travel council in at two, probably two and a half million, we will see gradually increasing revenues moving toward the mitigation side, but it won't be totally realized until about 2024, and then, and this is all assuming a 7% growth rate, which is kind of conservative, but that's generally how I like to do my projections. So about 2024, the travel council, that 32% would become greater than the 2018 revenue, and then the budget for the travel council would start to grow.
Okay.
But I think that the intention of the legislation is to ensure that the promotional expenditures in 2018 are locked in and can't be decreased.
So with that, you know, we need to discuss it, and I'd like to hear from everyone, including the travel council.
I would like to...
Can I ask that we use mics? We are streamed live, and that's the only way people will be able to hear.
I can do that.
I would like to make a statement from the travel council. I've been here four and a half years in this position, and we've not been given an opportunity to really weigh in on this particular plan. The board, the Tax Advisory Board, the County Council is deciding what to do, and this is something that, these are board members, they have a stake in the community, you know, they volunteer to be on this board, they really add a lot of value to the travel council. I had, I just came from the tourism conference up in Logan, and we had a meeting with UADMO, which is the Utah Association of DMOs, and there was a meeting that I attended to discuss because we had gotten, I was not aware, I was not aware of the legislation that was going to be put forth, and I was shown an email, that's how I found out about it, at the meeting, where it was, this verbiage was in the email from a commissioner from another area. So I had heard nothing or had seen nothing from our county council. At the UADMO meeting, the DMOs, there were DMOs in chamber combined with DMOs who were at the meeting, and the conversation was that they were kind of in the same boat, they had not heard about anything official. And the majority of them, not myself, but the majority of them were afraid to come out to say anything negative or discuss this proposed legislation because, for fear of losing their jobs, that their county council or their commissioners, that would weigh heavily, and they would be eliminated out of their positions. But I felt...
Can I just say, just so that everyone knows, DMO is the level, the position of Elaine's position, Executive Director of Destination Marketing.
Okay, good. And I felt that it was necessary to contact our council, and thank goodness that Curtis Wells was open to listen. So I had dialogue with Curtis before the meeting, and then filled him in after the meeting. But for the DMOs who do these jobs in 29 counties in the state, day in and day out, who have a staff of people who are looking to generate revenue for their counties, who are really engaged every day in their positions, and they've got, looking at how we can help to improve visitors' experiences here, but also, you know, looking out for the revenue, I think to not bring the DMOs to the table in some way, whether there's a collective group from larger counties and a mix of smaller counties, but to totally discard the travel advisory board's comments, which is in the state code, and that's why they're appointed, or to not even talk to the DMOs and just make a decision that we're going from here to here without having any consideration of our positions or the board, pretty much the board's position. So I decided that I would speak up for the group that is afraid to speak up and not come to the table because, for fear that they may lose their jobs in their county, and I'm not going to be afraid, I'm going to speak up because I really think it's something that we should have collectively sat around the table, discussed it, and you could hear things from the travel council board, their concerns, their advice, and really come to the table and join and have, and be all on the same page. So, but I want to thank you for listening.
So if I may respond?
Please.
This process is not, the language you're looking at here is not being proposed from Grand County. Grand County has not proposed this amendment to this law. We've discussed, if you polled all the council members, we all probably have somewhat varying opinions on what we would change, if we would change it. What you're seeing and where we're at now is, is that discussions like what's happened in Grand County has been happening in numerous counties that have funneled through the Utah Association of Counties, for which we utilize as a lobbyist to change laws. Representative Carl Albrecht has multiple counties in his district, including ours, that have shown interest in amendments to the law, and so what's happened is, is those discussions have happened between the representative and the Utah Association of Counties with legislators, with the Utah Office of Tourism. When this document, with this language, was first sent out, like to council members, they also copied Des Barker, who's the lobbyist who's advocated against amendments to the TRT law. So understand if folks feel like they haven't been brought to the table, that's the point of this meeting now, but also that this hasn't been something that's been negotiated or worked on in some dark place somewhere, and especially with, you know, the language that's being presented to us and we're discussing today is being shared openly with the folks that have taken a position against, to the changes to the law. Des Barker's been in this council chambers, speaking against changes to this law at another time. So processes, as we know, aren't always the best, and it's hard for us too because we don't always agree, but what's great is we have something now. We have something now in front of us, this tangible, and it's real, and it's going to be a bill. And, you know, what I'm hopeful for people is to apply a rational and reasonable analysis to what's in front of us this morning, because I think if this isn't it, we're close, and I think a lot of us want to put this to bed and move on to other issues. So as far as this floor that's been established for the 2018 funding levels for the promotional budgets, what does the travel count, how do you feel about that? Because I'll be honest with you, the discussions that I've been involved in with different people about how to change the law, what's on paper today is a win for the tourism community, definitely in Grand County, to have that tourism budget of 2018 levels, that's 2.7 million, locked in in perpetuity. And it's a win for the county to see growth over time that maximizes our ability or adds to our ability to mitigate those impacts. How do you feel about that?
First of all, I'd like to say that thanks for bringing us to our attention, our board worked really hard, half the board, we were up at Utah Tourism Industry Association, where I really would recommend, just as a side note, that council members attend this thing to ensure what's going on, so tourism being the major industry that is in the state...
Microphone, please.
Microphone.
Testing. So first of all, I'd like to make a point that I'm in favor, as a personal board member, of being able to make the change in allocation of money. I talked to Elaine, she seems fine to be able to work within that budget numbers from the 2018 number, as long as that's the base level going forward, I think she will work with that. And we understand that we have different circumstances in this county than other counties across the state. One thing I was engaged with were the DMOs from our corridor counties, so San Juan County, Carbon and Emory. I asked the Emory County DMO what her budget was for the year, what was her TRT collection for that county, and the total amount was $250,000 budgeted, and they brought in $240,000. That's compared to Grand County, that's bringing in $5 million. Now, these are also Class 5 and 6 counties. I'm in favor of a mature tourist destination like Grand County, where we have a trigger effect, and my biggest concern is not Grand County, we need the money to mitigate, I get that, totally get that, okay? But these other counties are not grand, and they don't have tourism like we do, and so they need their mechanisms to develop tourism in their particular counties. So I'm a strong advocate of a trigger amount, and I think what happened here last year in our county, when our transient room taxes exceeded our property taxes, that's a trigger, it's like, wow, you've done things. So the reason I would suggest a trigger for the state legislation is, A, it provides incentives for other similar sized counties, Class 5 and 6, to grow a tourism based economy. It seems very unfair to cut budgets of what are already low numbers in these counties, where TRT collections are a fraction of the amounts we collect in this county. Secondly, it would allow for a reinstatement of marketing funds should the TRT collection drop below a certain threshold level. In other words, you decide to cut the marketing to the community as a decision across the board, and for some reason tourism drops below a certain level, the TRT collection drops, maybe that's an indicator to the county to reinstate those funds again, to bring it back to where it was, because perhaps that would be an indicator that you do need the marketing money. We don't know that, this is forward legislation. So with that's in regards to Section A, as far as, that's fine, taking it to 32%, but please consider the other counties that don't have $5 million in collection, that are Class 5 and 6 counties. I'm not interested in Salt Lake County, Utah County, Wasatch County, Washington County, because they have vast populations. Our county population is 10,000 people, okay, so that's that. Section B...
Just clarify something, Howard, real quick. The legislation doesn't force anybody to spend money one way or the other, except for on the, limits the mitigation side. You can still spend 100% if you want it.
That's a county decision.
Yeah. I just want to make that clear, that we're not, this legislation doesn't change that, it's always been that way, that you can spend all of your TRT money on promotion, 100% of it, if the council chooses, and that's not changing.
You see what I'm saying? It's not for much Grand County's issue, it's San Juan County, they don't have $5 million in TRTs.
Until five years...
Again, they're also, sorry, just real quick, they're having the same dialogue with the association, you know, that we are...
The DMO's not.
And, well, but it's, and I had this conversation with Elaine, it's the county council and administration's responsibility that we're having these conversations, because the elected body that we're sitting with today is the voice of Grand County, whether some of us like it or not, sometimes I like it, sometimes I don't. But it's our job to get on the same page here and have a unified voice, you know, moving on.
Fair enough. So in agreement there, I think the board would agree with the change in that setting the lower level for the marketing, if that's a choice. One of my biggest issues, and I'll precede this with some numbers, there was a recent analysis done of Grand County as far as how many accommodations do we have. Now, in the state of Utah, to be classified as a resort community, as far as the tax place goes, as far as upstate looks at, what is your number? 66% is the number of overnight accommodations in a community, based on the total amount of accommodations for homes for people to live in. The number to be a resort community is 66%, of your accommodations should be for overnight accommodations. We have a percentage number of about 250%, we all know that. Now, I have strongest accolades for both the current city and county government for passing an Assured Housing Program. I think it's wonderful. It's 30 years too late, unfortunately, not your fault, you got it in the legislature last year, that's what happened. That means that every lodge and establishment that is currently built in this community, including the 13 that were got in before the deadline, are exempt from an Assured Housing Program. So that means the law itself is excellent, but you'd have to demolish everything in town and rebuild it in order to collect money from that source. So it's good, maybe 50 years from now when we're rebuilding properties, or if the county decides to expand somewhere in the county, but the city's kind of maxed out in where we can build, we know that. Plus, both governments have said and put a moratorium on any future building, so there's no, you can't even tap the Assured Housing Program that way. In the code currently, at the state level for county use, it outlines a number of areas that should be, can be funded from the money, the mitigation money. I strongly recommend in the legislation to include an allowed use for funding of Assured Housing developments. And again, I've mentioned that because of the, what's the expression, kicking the can down the road, it's happened, you guys are the current administration, same with the city, the can, this was talked about in the 1990s, we all know about that, we hadn't, we didn't do it until 2018. The can is huge now. That 66% number of what is a resort community compared to ours, I mean, we have a lot of homes to build to bring that number back down to what is a reasonable level. The tourism industry has a massive demand on employees. It's an industry that every level, tourism just being, that's the way we've moved forward as a community, that's what we are, we are definitely a tourism resort, big time. There has to be language in the law to be allowed to use the county to help fund affordable housing programs, Assured Housing, whatever you want to call it. The county government and city government have an advantage. If you set aside funding from the TRT taxes to be used, you can use, ask the city to match that funding. So all of a sudden, that one pot of money that can be collected from the transient room taxes, which is tourism taxes, don't forget, can be used to get matching money, not just from the city, you can apply for all the federal grants that apply to communities like ours, being in the situation we're in, to get even more money, and that would help, be an add to help problems. And I can guarantee you, go around the stakeholders in this community, the county and city have been criticized for stalling a lot of projects going forward, for whatever reasons. The hotels, by the way, just keep pouring into town. So there's a big shortage of housing, and we desperately need the numbers of employees to deliver service to the visitors of this community, because we have a responsibility to the tourists that come here, to deliver excellence in service, so they want to come back, because if they don't want to come back, because the service isn't great, because we don't have enough staff to staff our businesses, then we will need the marketing money, because we'll only have one-time users. We're degrading what we have, because development has been allowed to just march right through our community, and we all know that. 250% versus 66%, we have five times the amount of lodging, which is considered normal for a resort community. So the money, this is the only way I can see forward, is where can you get the money for these things? And the TRT is staring at us. I mean, I know there are other needs in the community, but the tourism, the TRT tax is not the only taxation that the county collects, all the buckets are being raised by tourism. The sales tax increases, the property tax increases, the hoodoo just opened, I don't know what the value of that hotel is, but we need to do something as a community, and this is a solution, to just change that in the zone. You can choose not to do it as a county, you have complete control over how you spend the money, but it needs to be in the language of the things, especially in our county, and don't forget, 95% of our county is federal land, so we're really strapped here. So this is just, you know, I'm very passionate about this aspect of the law change, it seems very subtle, but it is very critical that that is there, and the state needs to understand that, you know, I don't think they do, to be honest, because it's nowhere in the language. I mean, we talk about our biggest problem is affordable housing in this community, this would be a funding mechanism for it, if you manage to change the laws.
Well, I...
Unless you disagree with that.
No, I don't disagree with it at all, and in all honesty, you know, I think that, like Curtis was saying, the UACT position is a big compromise for a lot of folks, it's not exactly as aggressive a change as I personally would like to see. I think that, you know, by having this floor in place, you know, it's not like this change that's being proposed by UACT is going to suddenly free up all these funds. Right now, we're still struggling to meet the demands that we have, and that mitigation of tourism is being put on the shoulders of citizens, and we're, you know, being burdened by that. So I think that, you know, by having this gradual change over time, it's still just going to kind of go to the mitigation side, and it's not like we're going to suddenly have a pile of money for housing that I would love to have.
No, I'm not saying that, it would be, even if it was 10,000, if it was something, last year we put a list towards you as a board, as an advisory, tax advisory board, do you remember what was on that list?
Well, I know that housing is high on that list, and it's...
No, on the list that we gave you as a tax advisory board, saying this is the priorities that we feel that you as a county should embrace with the tourism money. That's the tax advisory board's role, is to tell, you know, to advise the county on how, as a group representing the industry, which is the industry in this community, and how they mitigate, and by not addressing the housing for 30 years, it's been a problem. I mean, now it's coming to a head.
Can I say something?
So just look for language, that's all, it's a simple thing, you could just say, it has convention centers, tourist facilities, museums, airport facilities, how about housing in there? Sure, housing.
So, Howard, in context, the high density housing policy that we have in place is So, Howard, in context, the high density housing policy that we have in place is, has developers rushing towards the county applying to do high density housing. So from a policy standpoint, that's not the priority right now, here. That's a conversation we can have after these changes. What the council needs to know is if the travel council thinks that what's proposed on paper here is fair, if so, we need to discuss it, if not, we need to understand why. Because the businesses in the community, and everyone needs peace on this issue, and we're not going to get that by going around and around and brainstorming more. We have something right here.
I, so I wrote a whole list of things out based on what you said is policy considerations, and I will give you this copy rather than tell you, and you can review this. I wrote for each area that you outlined changes in, that you sent to us as a paper to look at, not the, I mean, I'm in agreement with changing the amount of money, it's just, I want to have some impact on how, when you're taking this money, that it's being used to mitigate particularly things that are tourism related, and not being used in other areas, because for me as a citizen, you should be using other taxation revenues for those purposes, and the tourism tax is generated directly off visitors. And the direct effect of that is housing.
Our intention has been and will continue to be, to use TRT mitigation money to relieve the general fund for those essential services that are directly related to tourism. That's been the budgeting policy leading up to this point, that I would imagine will be the budgeting policy moving forward. We would like to, we would like to have a statement of position on what's being proposed on the agenda, the next county council agenda, in twelve, eleven days. And in the name of having this discussion upfront and allowing everyone to weigh in on what that statement is, we need to accomplish that now. And so, I get, let me ask some questions. Is preserving the twenty-eighteen promotional budget levels in perpetuity, does the travel council board feel like that's fair? Do you feel, do you feel like, how do you feel about that specific component? And please don't feel pressured, this is a genuine question.
No, I think it's fair. I think it's fair. I personally don't have, if we stay at two-thousand-and-eighteen levels, I think it's doable. I think the thing that's disturbing for me, and not the board, but for me, is that all other, you know, if you were weighing in on something as important as this is, this discussion, with other departments, you probably would discuss it with economic development or, you know, whatever the department was. But I know that the pressure, the pressure on the community is very negative, pressure on us, it's very negative from the community about tourism. But tourism is all we have to generate revenue. And tourism, our, the way we approach tourism can be a gateway to economic development. And I can show you information and bring to the table from sources who have identified this. So, you know, where we can work to showcase what we have and attract visitors who are coming here with the funds to be able to live here, open up businesses here, you know, we can be that gateway. And that's what I hope, and that's what we're starting to work on with everything that we're doing. But I think not, and I think the UACT is definitely wrong, and this is my personal opinion, in not bringing a portion of twenty-nine different DMOs from areas in the state to listen. They wouldn't do it to economic development, they wouldn't do it, they will listen, but to not at least sit down and have had this conversation, you know, several months ago, or go to attend a UACT meeting, I think is wrong. And yes, the Utah Office of Tourism does represent the state, but they don't represent Grand County. They don't represent the, you know, Wayne County, or Garfield County, or Washington County. And the DMOs who, again, are dealing with, these are our jobs and this is what we do day in and day out, I think consideration should have been given. And I would say that to Albrecht and to UACT and everyone, that yes, talk to the state tourism, talk to Vicki, talk to Dez, but you also need to let some of the people who look at this and are managing our tourism and bringing the revenue in every day, like, what are your thoughts? What can you cut? What do you think? Not just, well, we're going to do it and that's it. So I am thankful that you, I am grateful that you are taking this opportunity and you listened to my plea to have a conversation, and I appreciate it very much, I do.
Rory?
I've got a couple of questions. One is, is this number that's set for the two-thousand-and-eighteen, if, if say Elaine goes for a grant like we didn't pass the last time, does that, does that mean she gets minus, or does that mean she gets more?
No, this is, this would just be the budget coming.
So she could go with that two-point-five and still get more?
Yeah.
Okay, that's, I just wanted to clarify that. And then also, can you just tell me what the visitor percentage is, arches is right now? Can you tell me?
Yes, I'm going to say it's pretty, it was, it's flat, I would say, for the year. If it's up, it's up very slightly.
Excuse me, you said it was down nineteen percent?
I don't have it right, I don't have the, they're not, their numbers aren't updated through August.
I don't think they have June on there.
They're lagging behind on there, they had some system problems, so I don't have it there.
They talked about that at the tourism conference, about arches and visitation in general across the mighty five, which has been attributed to a lot of success for tourism in southern Utah. I mean, from a business standpoint, it's been a good thing. Because it was the hundred year anniversary of the National Park Service in twenty-eighteen, there was a lot of effort put out by the federal government, well, I say a lot of effort, there was effort put out by the federal government to promote that, but really it was the local areas that used that, and so it was a big anniversary. And there's been a softening a little bit on visitation since that time. Just sort of some numbers on the ground, and to really, one of the reasons that marketing's important, the European market is down, there's been a substantial drop in international visitors to this, to the US, attributed to many factors, trade wars, high US dollar rates, but the numbers are down substantially. The percentage share for international visitors was thirteen to the US, now it's eleven. Tourism is critical for our success in this community. Law changes are fine, but please engage us, because I've also suggested to the county for four years now, you're facing shortfalls in budgets right now. Four years ago, we told you about some issues that we have with our federal land agencies, and basically the Congress, our federal government, the big guys. The Congress is so critical for us here because they're responsible for funding, they fund the land agencies, they fund the BLM, they fund the park service. I've asked for this for years, I think our sheriff does an incredible job. I just want to know what percentage of that work is done on federally managed lands. And in essence, that is the responsibility of these land agencies. Now, I realize that the funding isn't there, but the cost burden for these has come on us, the county, because the BLM, the sheriff doesn't build a BLM and say, hey, listen, I spent three hours on your lands rescuing someone who got hurt, okay? The cost of that, that is a burden on our county. The BLM should be reimbursing our county for these funds because it's costing us a lot of money. You know the sheriff's budget. Just ask him how much time he spends on these lands outside of the five percent private lands of Grand County. I'm glad he's doing it because he knows these lands. I just don't think that we as a county should be paying for that. That's one of the major issues that I find with the Congress. Also the collection of, the compliance issue, the compliance issue. I've talked to four different reps about this, and nothing has happened. Sorry, and not to criticize you, but this is, you look at the clock, it's taking a while, this is costing us a fortune. The federal government has been out of compliance with the state since the first day it collected its first fee for either admission fees, permits, or camping. The only way you can change that is changing the federal law to make them collect. But in order for a county to become, for the feds to become compliant, they have to reconcile. And that needs to be something that you as a council, you know how connection-
That's something that we've discussed, and we should continue to discuss.
Discuss.
No, we have done more than discuss. I take it, I take-
We can't change federal law with this. Sharon's got something to say about what's in front of us. Sharon, I'd like to hear from you.
I, we've all known that something's coming down the pipe, and unknown is what was bothering us. Because, you know, state law could have changed it to where they do a percentage, we get twenty percent, that's it, period. This makes me feel better that they're putting a floor on it, so it won't go below a certain amount. I'm, if Elaine is comfortable with the two-thousand-and-eighteen budget numbers, then I, it makes me feel a lot better.
That's good, I mean, we've, we've shown, right, that we can grow tourism with the promotional budgets, with budgets smaller than the two-thousand-and-eighteen levels, right? I mean, can we agree on that? We've shown great growth in tourism pre-two-thousand-and-eighteen, so to lock in two-thousand-and-eighteen, we're in good shape.
We're doing a lot, the travel council's doing a lot more, and everybody's perception is that all we do are run ads on radio and television, and we don't. You know, we've got a sustainable effort in place, which has never been recognized by, really, by the council. We're working on sustainability. We're working with the city to help push sustainability and let people know around the world what we're working on. We just started our movement to help, which is, has grown out, which was grown out of sustainability. So we're, we don't just run ads, we, last month we sent over seventeen thousand links to local businesses. I mean, we're, we're doing more than running, you know, TV and radio ads. We're working on videos that are educational, we're producing educational materials, and that's what a lot of this funding goes for. And the do it like a local movement that we've brought forward is going to get a lot more recognition, because we are one of the first county, one of the first cities in the state of Utah to approach sustainability like we are. So we don't, and that's what I think, the message is an out to the community, that all we do is just want to bring people in. You know, we need the people to come in because we need the revenue. We need the revenue locally to pay the sheriff's department and everything else that goes on. But we also want to let people know that we're trying to educate visitors before they come here and while they're here, because that's important. Our goal as a travel council is to make sure that we are preserving, protecting, and educating people, because what we have, we want to be here for generations to come. So it's not that we don't care, we want to just bring millions more people in, that's not the case. We want them to come in because we need the revenue, but we also want them, we want to educate them about what we need them to do when they're here. And that's the goal of the travel, so we've, we've completely changed what the travel council used to be and where it's going. So I hope that, I hope that that message can get out to the locals so that they have a better understanding that we're not just bringing millions of people in, and we don't care about, because the board does care.
We recognize that, and we appreciate those changes that have, that have happened over the last few years, for sure.
I just got a question, just for my own clarity, so, sorry.
Who are you? We don't even know who you are.
Don't say that. So my question is, the two-thousand-and-eighteen floor, is it a floor or is it like a threshold? Like if we dip, you know, this is all great if we continue to grow, but I will tell you from businesses all over town, we are having a slump right now. I don't think there's any business that I've heard from that hasn't said we are down significantly this year. And so, so say it doesn't do this, say it does this, is that like a, no matter what you're getting this two-thousand-and-eighteen, or as it goes down, is it more than thirty-two percent? I'm just confused, sorry. It's always the two-thousand-and-eighteen.
It's a specific dollar amount of two-thousand-and-eighteen promotional budget was.
Because, can you get an insurance clause in there?
That was-
That should have a massive downturn.
Right.
I mean, obviously you have a choice as a county, right? Mike, you can choose, you can choose how you spend the money, you could choose, you could tell us spend a hundred percent.
Look, Chris outlined that.
And then I guess my next question is, is there some kind of like out clause as far as, I mean, so personally in last year, I mean, I've been burned by an impermeability contract before, so is there like a, as long as you do this and this and this, it's imperme- perpetuity, or is it set?
Well, from what, from what we've seen, which is what you're looking at, it's that in general. Right now, it's concept, it's not a bill.
Right.
But the sentiment expressed in the proposal is that that dollar amount is secure in perpetuity. And, you know, that's the nature, yeah, that's the context of this discussion, and I would imagine if the council chooses to support, you know, what's proposed here, in my opinion, that would be wise to outline that.
I guess I have some questions about flexibility. On the, and I just got this sheet, so I haven't read it really carefully, but it says modify and clarify allowable uses. And I guess what I heard Howard saying is that the business of employee housing is not on there, and maybe some other things, I think we've had discussions in the past with Rhodes and other kinds of things. So are you, when the bill is produced, will it look at and modify more allowable uses? I guess I'd like to see more flexibility, and maybe we already have it, I don't really understand.
Well, right now, just with the uses that's allowed for mitigation, we're using up all of the mitigation money that we have, but adding flexibility, or adding more bandwidth, more options in the allowable uses can't hurt, as long as it's tied to impacts of tourism. So I think, you know, like Howard said, you could make a case for housing, and probably some other things, but what those things are aren't clearly spelled out. But to answer your question, I don't see anything added in there that you can't very plainly connect to tourism, but that is on the table. And that's been proposed in the past. There was a bill, I believe, not this last session, but the session before that, that did add, what was it, Chris Rhodes or something, something that didn't really move the needle for us, but that's been something that's been tinkered with before, you know, that didn't really make big waves. And so, and that's something that a lot of counties ask for, and a lot of counties is, they're still not clear on, because it's not a big of an issue to them yet, they're still not clear in the minutia, you know, what they can do. So, does that answer your question?
Yeah, I think so. I just want to make sure that that's, we look at that housing business as one of the allowable uses.
I don't, yeah, I don't, yeah, I don't think anybody, I don't think anyone has a lot, is going to have much heartburn in having housing as an eligible mitigation expense.
Yeah, and if it gets to the point that we're actually covering the sheriff's budget and the solid waste budget and the EMS budget, then that's going to free up general funds that we could spend on what, you know, the council could choose to spend on whatever. And at this point, it's the citizens that are, like Howard's saying, we're paying for the sheriff to go out and, you know, mitigate these effects of people on public lands.
Just for the record, just for the record, Jason Chavis, who was our congressman before John Curtis, he was working on a bill that would allow block grants from the federal government to be given to counties for exactly that purpose, to reimburse them for all these expenses of sending the sheriff out. Now EMS and search and rescue, they have other methods of receiving payment. The sheriff, you know, the sheriff doesn't send a bill out to the person who got hurt and say, by the way, this is the cost of my service. And that's why I've issued, the EMS at least has a chance to bill their client who gets hurt or needs service. There's a mechanism in play to bill them for that. It's, I know that because I've been billed by them before for an emergency situation. So the sheriff is very different, and it's a big amount of the budget, and we see from our collections this last year, over two million dollars, which is allowable use, I get that, went to the sheriff's department, and it just feels that if that bill had, somehow John Curtis could get his hands on that bill from Jason Chavis's office somehow, and just bring it back, I mean, half the law was written, it was a really good piece of legislation, I thought, for the county. I'm a big supporter of what Elaine said, but as a tax advisory board too, I feel that I don't want to burden the residents of this community as little as possible with costs that tourism creates. That's my bottom line. So everything I present to you is done with a mechanism for you, a solution to help bring more money into the council, to make it less of a burden on us, the residents. I have the residents, I'm a resident. Listen, I know we're benefiting from tourism locally, if you live in the city, we don't have a property tax because of tourism. At the state level, the number was given that for each Utah citizen, tourism relieves them from taxes to the tune of- them from taxes to the tune of $1,200 a year. So we're benefiting in a way from tourism as residents. We just don't, the residents don't always appreciate it because they don't know these numbers. So there's so many methods that I think it's, we're, we're a small class five county. I've, I've been on the Travel Council for eight years now. The council at that time was completely different, as was the Travel Council Board. So these issues are, are not going away. And I, my hope is that you, the current council, really don't sit back on these because it's money we're missing from our community. And it's money that we can definitely use as a community to help pay for things. And it's, it's too much of a burden on us residents because our government doesn't play, are not partners with us. And that should change. And that's your role as a legislative body. In my, in my eyes, you as elected officials, that's the procedure that you move to the next level and say, how can we improve this? And we're at the cutting edge in this county of outdoor recreation in Utah. There's no other saying, well, this is how we should do it. These are the best practices. We're discovering as we go. We've made some mistakes. Assured housing took a while. Sand flats is a great example of something we've done as a community that nobody else does.
Yeah.
So take that and, you know, lead us.
So basically, the purpose of this meeting is just to discuss this statement that you put in here. And you wanted to know if, if the council, or the Travel Council is supportive of this.
Yes.
Did you need us to make a motion?
No.
Or anything? Is there anything that you need us to vote on?
No, it, it's just for discussion purposes because we are going, the council's going to vote on this, this formal statement of position.
You want to fall into the power board on this, just for your?
No, but it's, it's, uh, you know, these conversations are going to continue. And I'm sure that, you know, we want to, to present this to the state legislators through UAC with a united front. And we don't want, you know, the county council saying one thing, the Travel Council saying another thing and sending missed messages. And if we all agree that this is a good path forward for our community, we just want to sit, take this opportunity to sit down and say, yes, this is it. So that when we're having conversations on the side, people aren't undermining each other or, you know, speaking in different directions. And so if this isn't the way that we feel is best for the whole community, we want to nail it out now. Because like Curtis was saying, there's lots of different opinions of what would be best. And UAC has done a, taken an attempt to try to get a united voice from all the Utah counties. And rather than fighting them, you know, we'd like to kind of fall in step and say, if this is what's best for the counties of Utah, we're on board. And so we just wanted, before we made that move, we just wanted to make sure that this is what makes sense to the Travel Council as well. So. So, Mr. Chair, maybe I'll read this statement of position.
Please.
Because it was just a handout this morning. So what, what we're discussing here is a statement of position with county letterhead and logo on it. It says, "Proposed changes to the Utah State Transient Room Tax Law by the Utah Association of Counties and Representative Carl Albrecht. The Grand County Council wishes to formally support the proposed changes outlined in UAC's Utah's Transient Room Tax 2020 Legislative Suggestion Outline, specifically the section titled 'Suggestions for Modernization.' Outlines updated in the TRT formula and what we believe to be an accurate compromise in the effort to bring this law up to date with modern circumstances." The section reads, "Set the tourism and promotion floor at 32% from 47% and establish a dollar-based floor that is equal to what was spent on marketing and promotion in 2018. This presents a loss in revenue while allowing for growth to be allocated on the 32% formula. This would provide greater flexibility to address growing tourism-related infrastructure demands while also ensuring that the promotional efforts are not harmed. These changes will allow Grand County to both continue to grow and sustain a vibrant tourism economy while enhancing our fiscal capabilities and mitigating the impacts that tourism places on our infrastructure and critical services. Sincerely, the Grand County Council."
I'm all for that, except I don't like the idea of the dollar floor for the formula. It should be the percentage floor. It should always be 32%. Because it outlines for growth, I mean, it outlines for inflation.
It's whichever's bigger.
Whichever's bigger. Can you outline that there then? Just so, is that, because I see confusion there.
Well, we can, the answer is yes, we can better outline that in our statement of position. Really what this is, is just a supportive document of what the main handout is that came directly from UAC. So we're, we're supporting what they've outlined. This is just a shortened version that gets down to the bread and butter.
So the 2527105 is going, 2527105 is the amount that will be consistent going forward.
Lowest, that'll be the, I mean, if the 32% goes above that, then you have a little more to work.
Right, that.
But it will always be that minimum, even if, that means as a county, you wouldn't be able to take, if it, say it became like 50% of the amount, I mean, that's another danger too, of course.
Well, that's the thing, right now, the 2018 level is way above 32%.
But based on the state, the way the state code was written.
Right, so are, it's going to take years for the 47 amount of 2018 to equal 32 amount. So.
Got it.
Chris's projection is 2024.
2024.
That's.
Uh, well, that's based on 7% growth, which is conservative. And so if there, if the growth were higher, if the growth were higher, then it would happen sooner that the Travel Council would begin to grow again above the 2018 level. But this is conservative projection. I mean, it, it does bring up a bit of an issue of what would happen if, if we started seeing a decrease, an actual decrease in TRT. And then it would have, you know, it'd have a detrimental effect towards mitigation if we were locked in at, at 2018 and we started to see decreases. Maybe that's something that needs to be addressed in the legislation if that were to happen.
Consider what happened to the rec. department when you were bonding monies from the mineral lease monies at that time and you were kind of bonded out on the incomes coming in. If you were to do something to that with the TRTs.
You would probably want to protect yourself from that bonding issue. If you, you know, say you were to get involved in building an infrastructure for tourism-related facility, that would likely be a bond. And you'd want to protect that bond money and not, you know.
So we'll make sure to add, we'll make sure to outline that concern both to our feedback to UAC and in the statement of position and to Carl Albrecht. And we've advised Carl Albrecht and UAC to stay as close as possible on this as to not get squarely through the process. So what, we think that that's really important. And they're working very closely together on it now. So we'll cover all our bases in communicating that concern that was just raised to all parties and included in our statement in two weeks.
I did, as a, as the chair of the board, I did contact Carl Albrecht. And just so you know, he, he directed me to make sure that all this communication comes through you, which I respect. I mean, I want to do it the right way and to follow the protocol. So just engage us, you know, we, our board is a, you know, they're really engaged in the issues of the community too. We know deep down what's happening on the ground, what the, what needs to be mitigated. I'm sure you know a lot more, just, we're, you know, we're good. We're good people to have as an advisor board and we just, hopefully you'll listen to some of our advice.
Yeah. Mr. Chair, what I'm hearing is, is that there's, as, as we've known, there's continued room for improvement in our communication and our working relationship with the Travel Council. But with the proposed bill to reform TRT, we're in agreement that it's a good compromise.
Seen a lot of head nods.
Sorry, just one more question.
Yeah, please.
I'm not like disagreeing, I just, just to clarify also. So say, say, you know, you talk to, you address that concern, I guess I'm just asking that you still keep businesses in mind that do still rely heavily on the marketing of the Travel Council. So you know, that 32%, you know, it's great right now, but if things were to drop and we really needed a boost, it's our small businesses. I mean, our bigger, you know, more established businesses, they're probably going to be fine. But we have a lot of small businesses and new businesses. And they're the ones that, you know, rely heavily on it. And they're the ones that, you know, can't come and do the fight on their own. And so I guess I'm just asking that in that consideration, since it's not lined out yet, that you, you think of them as well, that that 32% may not be, I mean, I kind of like the floor amount for them.
The scenario that we just ran through, that would actually be an issue for the mitigation side, not the promotion side. So as a small business person, you know, with my other hat on, I can tell you that that's definitely a concern of the council.
Right.
To keep, you know, those businesses going and thriving, so.
I just want to clear something up too, just from that whole standpoint of small business, myself with my other hat on, one of those. Please don't think that the small businesses don't spend any money on marketing, because I can categorically disagree with you. About 10, 19, 5 and 10% of my annual budget is spent on marketing. What the Travel Council does for it is it brings people to the area. And so once they're here, that's what I call macro marketing, and it's so critical, just because there's 29 counties in this state. And trust me, after being at a tourism conference, we're not the only state in the tourism business, you know? Every state's got tourism. So protecting those businesses, we do, I do micro-marketing. So I, I'm so grateful as a business to the Travel Council for just bringing people to grand. But my, that's when my marketing begins. I spend, I call it micro-marketing. So I'm in all the locally-produced publications, say, when you're in Moab, come to my business. And I'm competing with all the other. So we are spending money on marketing too. We're not, they're reliant on the county to be our marketing arm. Yes, in a sense we are, but we're also doing, spending a great deal of marketing money too, so.
Mr. Chair, I'll have an updated version of this formal statement of position out next week in advance for the agenda. And make sure that that's available for the Travel Council, that it reflects the sentiments expressed in this meeting, and we'll look forward to getting that passed.
Jay Lynn.
I'd like to hear from Mary. Then I would like to make a comment. I mean, I just feel like a lot of people have been talking and.
Mary.
Yes, thank you. I was going to say, when the concern that was brought up earlier, that until five or six years ago, the county was spending general fund money on promotion. So that is going to always be an option for other counties to do, because we were doing that five, six years ago. That's when we cut off and started using all of ours to deal with mitigation. And so.
Wasn't it?
No.
When we went and asked them to take over the, uh, the film commission. Prior to that, the county council was paying.
There was a rate change in 2013, it went from 3% to 4.25%. And that's when really, you know, there was more money coming in. That's when we started numbers.
It's two thirds of the first 3% go to the Travel Council, one third to the county. And then of a one and a quarter, that all goes to the county. So that's how it's divided up. So the Travel Council's always had a separate budget.
Yeah. I mean, there has been times in the past where some expenses that were allowable.
Okay, that's what I meant.
Under the transient room tax as expenditures were being paid for.
By the council.
And we did move some of those expenses into the TRT budget, either under the Travel Council, if it's allowed, like the film commission, or, or other mitigations on the other side. And so there, there have been times in the past where we've moved expenses that were allowable from the general fund to the TRT. But I think that's maybe what you're talking about.
Yeah, that's what I was talking about.
We do allocate $90,000 to the film commission. We split that with the city.
And then the other thing on, I know we have been working, and of course, people just like, they don't know how much you have been doing to help with tourism and helping, you know, changing your model. And people don't know what's going on behind. You don't know how much effort is being put into putting pressure on the federal government to spend to do more to help with the mitigation. I'm working both with the government, I'm working with John Curtis's office, with Romney's office, and with the governor's office. And we are in communication at least once a week or every other week on what's going on. We are changing the tune to, instead of saying that we want to have TRT tax placed on federal campgrounds, we're asking that they charge a mitigation fee, a, to, because that is more palatable and easier to get past than adding a tax, because there's a whole bunch of rules around taxing federal lands. So we are working on it. And I, I took offense when it was like we had been doing nothing. That is not the truth. It's just that people don't know what we're doing on a day to day.
I apologize, Mary, I apologize.
Um, I just want to get on public record. Well, first of all, I'll disclose, I am the owner of a B&amp;B. So there's that small business interest I have. I, to me, this doesn't go far enough. Taking it to 2018 levels, to me, is very, very little change. Yes, I do see that down the road, five, 10 years from now, it's fairly significant. But also, the cost of living and the price of things increases as well. So I would feel more comfortable, I mean, it's pretty radical, but I'd feel more comfortable if it was, let's see, 30, is it 32%? 37% of total expenditures that year, which would take the promotional side down to 1.6 million. I know that would not be palatable. I realize that. I'm not naive enough to think that's going to fly, but that's what I'm hearing from lots and lots of people, longtime, sixth-generation residents of Moab, as well as new people. So, I'm just getting it on the public record. I know it's not going to fly. But having said that, I'd be more comfortable, I, I, that's my, that's my number one position. But number two position is to take it back to at least 2017 levels, which if you assume Chris's 7% increase and then backtrack that to 17, that would be like 2.3 million. So that's not too huge of a change.
Half a million dollars of the amount that we use roughly is for operations. And that's salaries. And so if you take it to a million and a half dollars, that leaves us very, by the time we have to print the travel planner and send postage and just everything, that we would have virtually very little funding for advertising.
Right.
So I, I know that the community is saying that, but what other revenue generators, what other businesses, industry, what do we have that is generating revenue to come in to the community? What, what other?
I think the point is, is that, that we're feeling strapped now. And the, the council is trying, you know, Jay Lynn serves on the budget advisory board for the, the whole county, as well as you.
Yes.
And you know that, you know, there's serious talks of, you know, property tax increases and we're trying to figure things out. And we would really like to see immediate change rather than five or 10 years down. And so I think, I appreciate her for bringing that up because we don't want to raise property tax to continue to, to offset these costs. And I hope that folk, that, that you realize that the, the real goal here is to have this united voice.
Yes.
And that I, I see this as a really big compromise. And I see it as, as budging the needle a little without, hopefully without stressing the, the Travel Council and your mission very much. And so I, I would also fall more with Jay Lynn and try to push it back to 2017 or 2016 or not even have a floor. But I realize that, that when we take this to Carl and, and the powers that be, they're going to run this bill, we need to all be on the same page. We need to all have a united voice. And I'm willing to, to step back on my side and say, okay, let's just do something, because continuing to do nothing and continuing to kick the can down the road isn't going to help our community. And so I appreciate everyone coming today. I, I appreciate everyone's comments. I appreciate us having a civil discussion, working together. I appreciate citizens in the room that are invested in this process and procedure. And, and I hope that if there comes a time in this process where we're feeling like we're not lockstep and moving forward together, that we can talk about this in a similar, similar manner and that there's not, you know, other conversations happening around the side. And so if, if there's a message to be relayed to Albrecht or whatever, like, let's keep this going, because I think this is really crucial. I think that, that we are growing and it's a great thing and no one is trying to say that we don't want growth. Everyone is, is, we are, I for one, as a small business owner that directly profits from tourism in the, in the community, I want to see a vibrant tourist economy. And nobody here is trying to push back against that at all. So we appreciate all the work you're doing. We appreciate this maturity, you know, it's like, this, this original TRT did a great job to kind of put Grand County where it is. And as we grow and mature, we... And as we grow and mature, we, we kind of need to, to grow with it. And I think this is a step in the right direction and I appreciate all the work that's gone into this. And, uh, I appreciate working with the other counties and we'll definitely take that feedback of like, um, you know, the corridor counties being, being, uh, you know, not hindering them. And, um, the fact that, uh, that UAC is addressing this and they're bringing it up and it's not being driven by Grand County, I think it would be, you know, foolish for us not to kind of support them in that effort, so.
I just hope that we can keep the communication going upfront.
Yes.
So that we're not finding emails being sent from other counties.
Yeah.
I mean, that, that is something, if you, if, if there's something that needs to be discussed, I think the board and myself would appreciate an honest conversation, not that I show up at a meeting and I find out that another commissioner sent someone an email that outlines all of this stuff and people from our county were included in the email.
Yeah.
So I'd ask for open dialogue and.
Transparency.
Exactly.
For sure. And that's, I'm sorry, it wasn't more timely. You know, Lincoln's email to us came out late, the week before last, it's, we haven't even had it two weeks, I don't think.
And we can't control what other commissioners email, you know, and, and, but what's important is that we've met here today, that we have an opportunity to go.
Right, right. And I think, I have to thank you for being open to listen.
It's not just logistics of being on the same page up at the legislature, it's important in the community that we're on the same page, you know, and that, you know, we can find compromises and solutions to these problems. That's a really important component to this.
Well, with that, need to get over to Cedar City for a little.
Before the county council adjourned, I'd like to ask you to reconsider. I'll be up there, but, so, would the county council?
Great, alright, so, uh, unless there's any other burning desires around, uh, the joint Grand County Council, Moab Area Travel Council.
Can I have a question?
Uh, were we interested in opening it up for citizen comment? Yes, we, uh, we do have another agenda item before 10 o'clock, so, please.
Just a quick question, if you were sitting, it was really great and, you know, very soothing and everything, but how do we make sure that whenever you're sitting here now, whenever there's the vote, that you're gonna hear?
I think that's the dedication, making sure we have, um, county council member at every travel council. Or I think we need to make them at the council, that somebody's there, whether it's the person that's assigned or someone else, that we always have a council member there so we know what you're doing and we relay the back.
One thing I was gonna say to Curtis, when you send that, uh, letter to all the travel council, can you send it to the chamber? Yeah, 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 I mean, the, the point of, the point of having a, a formal statement of position is that that's our statement of position and that's available to everybody. That's our voice to weigh in.
How do we make sure it's not gonna change?
Well, because it's gonna be, it's gonna be posted publicly before the vote, there will be an opportunity to speak on it at the vote, and prior to all that, it's gonna be sent to the travel council in advance for feedback.
That's it, we just want to have a vote.
Sure.
Great, well, uh, thank you so much for this.
Thank you.
It sounds like the attorney has some other business for the council, so, uh, thank you for joining us.
Thank you.
And we'll, uh, do some attorney business here real quick.
I'll just stay there, I won't get bombed.
Okay.
Oh. Do that, do that.
What?
Do you need to do that?
Uh, maybe if the attorney was here on time, we could've got a writing first on.
I told you guys I dropped it. So you should've bumped, bumped it for me.
Thank you.
Didn't realize it was first though. Well, I couldn't have done anything about it. I'm still single parenting and I'm in for two weeks and I'm old.
Oh, yeah, whatever, you're loving it.
I loved it for a while.
Are we, uh, are we sitting here or are we sitting there? Uh, I think we can just stay here.
You're staying, right? For a moment?
Just a moment, a little tech.
I think we're still recording. Hit a little change.
All weekend kind of thing?
Yeah, but I'm like driving other people's kids over there, so it's like, and we gotta pick them up for school, so like, they're just like, you know, out on the curb.
Yes, yes.
Well, should we start without Mary and she can just join in when she gets here?
Why don't you come over here so we can look at you?
Oh, yes, here.
Oh, yeah.
Thank you.
Did you see there was a Wall Street Journal article? Yeah, and they brought it up. Yeah, and it talks about, it talks a lot about.
Because you have to have a subscription to what.
Nice team spirit, Jay Lynn, I like it.
I get to wear the badges once a year, so I take it as a thing.
Oh, because it's homecoming?
Yes.
And that's when you wear the badges? Yeah.
What do you got?
Okay, so, um, I would like you to amend the motion to extend the job opening until next Friday, the 26th, because we've already had it extended twice. This will be the third job opening advertisement. I don't think we will capture many more people. Um, and the problem is we have deadlines on the other end, so Justice Tubbs is done on October 31. We actually, the process is different than a district court judge. This person doesn't need to be an attorney. So all the training has to happen before they take the bench, not after. So with the district court judge, it happens after. They not just have to take a 40-hour training.
What do you want the motion to be?
Have to take a test.
First, we have to, somebody needs to amend to reconsider.
I think it's a motion to amend, is that right, Chris, Ruth, and I think it's a motion to amend.
I'd like to reconsider.
Please, Robert, I'm very.
Because it's a done deal, so that's why I'd be reconsider.
Well, normally if you want to change the outcome of the vote, in the same meeting, it's a motion to reconsider.
Okay.
Okay.
But are you changing the vote?
Well, you would, you would make a motion to reconsider and then the motion to, it kind of like reverses the clock and then you make a motion to.
A new motion.
Amend, because that original motion would come back on the floor after you moved to reconsider. And then you amend that motion to whatever.
This guy's so good.
That makes sense? Makes sense to me.
And maybe explain what you want to reconsider.
You just want the date changed?
Yeah.
Okay, so.
The date changed?
Yeah.
So the first, I think.
September 26th.
First, we have to move to reconsider.
Motion to reconsider.
Motion made by Curtis Wells, second by Mary McGann, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries six to nothing. Okay, and so now we're looking for amended motion with an amended date being.
Yes, motion to amend.
What's the date?
The 26th.
September 26th.
Date from the day is the 27th.
But we want Thursday, we need the Thursday.
We need to post it in the paper, that was the crux.
Right.
So the motion is to what, to amend?
To amend the day, closing date, to amend the closing date to being, uh, September 26th as opposed to October 3rd.
Second.
Was that motion?
Not, not October 2nd.
I'm going to amend the motion to.
Yeah, yeah. Got it.
September 26th as opposed to October 3rd. Not right in charge by office.
I second that.
A motion, motion made by Mary McGann, seconded by Curtis Wells, discussion?
None.
That's what, is that, what do we got?
Do I need more discussion?
I don't know, no, I'm just making, I'm triple checking before we.
That'll give our commission only a little over a month to pick someone, um.
Well, first you gotta get a commission, but okay.
True, and that's why I even support this. If we had a commission today, I wouldn't even support reopening it.
And, uh, but that gives us, that works with timeline with advertising in the paper and all that?
Sure.
Sure? Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Motion passes unanimously, six to zero, that is the end of, uh, any future considerations? All right, uh, oh, um, a future consideration, uh, we're having repeated talk about better attendance at these meetings. Is this something, do we need to kind of switch out here for a bit and?
Well, Terry, I've been, I committed to going and then I committed last week, so Terry went for me. I just think we need to make sure somebody.
Are you, I thought you were on the travel council.
I was, but it's so hard right now.
I get it.
If I get one more month, I'll be, I can make every meeting.
Okay.
It's just, the season is too tough during the day to get away.
So, so, do you want to continue with subs or should we just switch a whole board?
Whatever you guys want, whatever you feel like, I'm not, I'm not hurt anyway.
Okay, so, the, uh, maybe a future consideration for.
Somebody needs to be those one.
Okay, I'm gonna put an agenda, I'm, if you're cool with it, I'm gonna put an agenda item on the next meeting about, uh, a regular for the travel council. Okay, great. Uh, any other future considerations?
Um, did I understand that, will that be like right away?
We'll get it, I just, you know.
Before I walk out the door.
Yeah, we'll do it, we'll do it next county council.
Uh.
Next month, and the next month, and the next month, and the next month, by March.
Alright, uh, that's the end of our agenda, adjourn the meeting at 9:23.
9:23.
Thank you, everyone. Thanks, Kurt.
Have a safe trip.
Thanks.
So, um, so the meeting's act doesn't actually have.
I think it's a tree.